All right, welcome everyone to the June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two Town of Hopkinton Town Council meeting. I'd like to call it to order with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm gonna do roll call. Council Marvel.
Present.
Council Hurst.
Present.
Council Davis.
Present.
Council Geary, present. And Council Moffett is present. Up first, we have public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment, please approach the podium and just state your name for the record, please. Or if you're at home, online, just raise your hand. Give it about a minute. That's anyone, Brian? All right, so up next, approval of agenda order. Is everyone fine with the way the agenda is?
Yes.
On here? Up next, consent agenda. Approved Town Council meeting minutes of June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Accept the following monthly financial slash activity report from the town clerk. Said July fifth, two thousand and twenty-two is a hearing date for a multi-event permit filed by Little Roddy Lobster.
Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be adopted.
Second.
All right, with a second, all in favor.
First, aye.
Davis, aye.
Geary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, the motion passes, the consent agenda is approved. Up next, vacancies and appointments. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to accept Tom Thompson's resignation from the Land Trust Board of Trustees.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the resignation of Tom Thompson from the Land Trust Board of Trustees.
I second with many regrets.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, discussion. I personally do not know Mr. Thompson. I do appreciate his time on the land trust. And I think first time.
Council Moffett, too. I also would like to thank Mr. Thompson for his time and his commitment to the to the land trust in a town of Hopkinton.
Yeah, I would say that I've known Tom Thompson for many years at this point. And a lot of times volunteers come and go, but he's been a mainstay for many years. And his resignation is a true loss for the town.
Thank you.
He's been, he's been great in the little time that I've been on for the Land Trust. He's been one of the leaders.
Excellent. All right, well, we have a second, all in favor.
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Geary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, Mr. Thompson's resignation is accepted. Number two, discuss, consider posting the Land Trust Board of Trustees vacancy on the website.
Council Hurst, so moved, second.
All in favor.
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Geary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, the motion passes. Up next, under new business, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to award the bids for the following RFP, winter sand.
Good evening, council. Yeah, so we went out to bid previously. We had one bid come in. And go, I think we should go with Dave Director Caswell's recommendation that the bid award for winter sand services be awarded to Richmond Salt Sand and Gravel of Wyoming, Rhode Island. At a rate of fourteen sixty-four per ton, and that's the pickup price. The seventeen ninety-four would be the price per ton for delivery. Director Caswell informed me that he was gonna be getting it delivered, so that that's the price we'd be going with.
All right. I have one question. What is the current pricing?
It was fourteen something. Fourteen dollars per ton, which is actually pretty cheap.
Picked up?
Well, I think he's saying.
That's picked up, delivered to seventeen.
Fourteen, fourteen sixty-one there.
No, that's the new price. What's the current price? That was my question.
Price per bid to deliver is seventeen point nine four.
Though the previous contract, I don't have that in front of me. I can let you know, though, by the end of the meeting.
Thank you. That's what I'm always gonna know, current.
Do you wanna wait, maybe wait till the end to vote on it? And I don't think it's earth shattering.
It's not, but I think.
Sure, yeah, no.
You wanna move the motion to the end of the agenda?
No.
That's fine. So do we have a motion? All right, you made a motion.
No, I didn't make the motion. I will make the motion. Award the bid.
You have to read that whole thing. You want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead, Sharon.
Move that the Hopkinton Town Council award the bid for winter sand services to Richmond Sand and Gravel at the rate of fourteen dollars and sixty-four cents price per ton picked up and seventeen ninety-four price per ton delivered. Twenty dollars and fifty cents price per cubic yard picked up and twenty-five dollars and fifteen cents price per cubic yard delivered.
So you want me to make that motion?
You just made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion?
I just did it. Yeah.
Okay, fine. I would draw my attempt to make a.
So you could second, though?
I will second that.
Excellent. All in favor, if there's no other discussion, no other discussion, all in favor.
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Geary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, motion passes. Up next, we have discuss, consider, and vote to adopt financial resolutions and a tax resolution for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two. I will read these resolutions out. So Town of Hopkinton, R.I., financial resolutions, resolve, I'm sorry, a resolution number one. Resolve in accordance with Rhode Island General Law forty-five dash two subsection C subsection four that the electors of the Town of Hopkinton qualify to vote on any proposal to impose a tax or the expenditure of money. The town financial referendum lawfully assembled on the fourteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-two and approved the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The estimated tax rate for real and tangible property is eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents. No increase from the current rate of eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents. The tax rate for motor vehicles is twenty dollars.
Mr. President, I move adoption of resolution number one.
Can we make a motion to prove them all or at the end, or we?
Been done different ways.
Yeah, I mean, we can do it that way, too.
Well, you haven't read the others, so people probably wanna know. So I make a motion, we adopt resolution number one.
All right, all in favor, or is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
And Moffett, aye, motion passes. Resolution number two, resolve, the voters of Town of Hopkinton in consideration of the questions on the June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two financial referendum ballot did approve the following. Local question one, resolution restricting the unspent balance remaining in the legal fees solicitor line item zero one dash zero zero dash five two two five and the unspent balance remaining in the litigation and collective borrowing line item zero one dash zero zero dash five two two six in the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two fiscal year general government budget to be placed into the legal fees restricted account.
I move adoption, Mr. President.
All in favor, second. All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Geary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, the motion passes. Resolution number three, resolve that the town finance director be and is hereby authorized and empowered to credit any appropriations fund, any receipts or donations which apply against that fund and all others not so designated to the general fund.
Mr. President, I move adoption of resolution number three.
I second.
All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Geary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, motion passes. Up next, resolution number four, resolve that the several appropriations specified be expended under the direction and supervision of the town council except those pertaining to public school bills payable and interest, which some shall be dispersed and paid out by the town finance director.
Mr. President, I move adoption of resolution number four.
I second.
All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Geary, aye.
Moffett, aye, motion passes. Resolution number five, resolve that the town finance director of the Town of Hopkinton be and is hereby authorized and empowered to borrow upon the credit of the town as the same may be necessary during the present fiscal year. Such sum or sums as may be required to meet the expenses and obligations of the town. Provided, however, that such loan shall not be at any time exceed or shall not at any time exceed the sum of one million, five hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. President, I move adoption of resolution number five.
I second.
All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Geary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, motion passes. Resolution number six, resolve that the over expenditures in the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two fiscal year budget identified by the town finance director are hereby approved.
Mr. President, I move adoption of resolution number six.
I second.
All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Geary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, motion passes. Up next is the tax resolution. Resolve that the town council of the Town of Hopkinton, based on the budget adopted by the vote of the town council on June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two pursuant to section two thirty seventy of the Hopkinton Town Charter, follow approval of the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget by the voters at the financial town referendum on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Hereby impose a tax levy at a town council meeting held this twentieth day of June, two thousand and twenty-two in order the the apportionment and collection of a tax at the ratable real estate and tangible personal property in the sum of not less than eighteen million, nine hundred, eighteen thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and not more than nineteen million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. Said taxes for an ordinary expenses and charges of the town for payment of interest and indebtedness and for the purpose authorized by law. The assessor shall portion said respective taxes upon the assessed evaluations of the ratable property of said town as determined by the said assessor of the town as of the thirty-first day of December, two thousand and twenty-one, at twelve o'clock midnight, according to law. The said respective tax levies shall be applied to the assessment rule as aforementioned, as aforesaid and the resulting tax rules certified by the assessor to the town clerk no later than the fifteenth day of July, two thousand and twenty-two. The town clerk on receipt of said completed tax rule shall forthwith make a copy of the same and deliver it to the town finance director who shall forthwith issue and affix a said copy, a warrant under her hand directed to the collector of taxes of said town commanding her to proceed and collect said taxes of the persons in the states liable therefore. Said taxes shall be due and payable on and between the first day of August and the eighth day of September, two thousand and twenty-two. Next, and or may be paid in equally quart- equal quarterly installments. The first installment of twenty-five percent on or before the eighth day of September, two thousand and twenty-two and the remaining, and the remaining installments as follows. Twenty-five percentum on the eighth day of December, two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-five percentum on the eighth day of March, two thousand and twenty-three. Twenty-five percentum on the eighth day of June, two thousand and twenty-three. Each installment of taxes, if paid on or before the last day of each installment period successively and in order, shall be free from all charge for interest. Accepting, however, that where the combined total of said tax and additional tax levied is in an amount not in excess of one hundred dollars. It shall be due and payable at a single installment on and between the first day of August and the eighth day of September. If the first installment or any succeeding installments of taxes is not paid by the last day of the respective installment period or periods as they occur, then the unpaid quarterly payments shall be due and payable immediately and shall bear interest on any unpaid quarterly payments at the rate of twelve percentum per annum. Resolve that the the collector of taxes shall collect and pay onto this town's treasury as the same is collected, the tax this day.
Mr. President, I move adoption of the tax resolution.
I second.
All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Geary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, the motion passes. Catch my breath for a minute. All right, up next, under unfinished business, American Rescue Plan Act funds. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to approve the American Rescue Plan Act funds project list for the Town of Hopkinton with a contribution to emergency services contingent upon the Town of Richmond approving their requested contribution.
Yes, so, good evening, council. Were you able to see, I hope you were able to see my email earlier where I said the revised list. A couple of small revisions. I made the adjustment for emergency service contributions from a hundred to the hundred hundred K to one hundred and thirty-five, nine, two, six, which is what they requested, so that's fully funded. And I took that amount, the thirty-five, nine, two, six, out of consultant services and also eliminated the financial system upgrade. It was kind of one of the smaller ticket items and it it just seemed to get us there as far as what we were trying to make up to fully fund the emergency services. So I think we could also maybe squeeze that into the CIP next year, because it's not a heavy lift at, you know, sixty-three hundred dollars.
Right.
I would like to say that I did visit with the town manager today. A couple of things, you know, we can always generally tweak things and very difficult, I know the libraries came in and some other things, but I'm pretty well satisfied where we're going. You know, obviously, things like in town government, you don't have fundraisers, you don't have fundraisers, the fun the Department of Public Works and the libraries can have fundraisers in emergency. But I'm really particularly grateful for the 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 department that takes it on the chin budget-wise, which is the Public Works Department. I'm finally delighted that they're getting some. The only question I have for the town manager is two things, and we had talked about today. Number one, and I don't think I talked to you about that. Is there a legitimate concern about reducing the consultant? Is that gonna put the town in jeopardy at all? And my second question is, we had talked, and I know Councilor Davis, and I like to publicly thank her for efforts on the financial concerns about the ambulances in town. Whether or not we're gonna support them, and I don't have a problem giving them money just that I'm concerned about them getting some financial advice, especially the asthma ambulance so that we can avoid the problems that we've had financially with, you know, concerns about insurance reimbursement and things of that nature. So could you address those concerns, please?
Yeah, so your first concern about consultant services, the number that was in the proposed projects before was not to exceed. So it was, it was basically they're gonna bill us incrementally and let us know when we get close to the cap or kind of give us progress reports as we move along. I think that we're gonna, there's gonna be heavy lift upfront, obviously, where we're gonna have to rewrite some of our policies and our RFP. And then I think we'll be able to keep a pulse on it as we move forward. And if if it came to it, we would maybe be able to find some funding down the road if necessary. But I think this is probably in line with what we'll need for consultant services after speaking with them or two companies that we've been working with and negotiating with. I think this is probably pretty close to what we're gonna need. It's hard, it's really hard to say at this point how those hours are gonna be spent and how quickly. But I think the number before was a high, definitely a high watermark. I think this is probably right on pace with what we're gonna need. And if we did need additional funds down the road, I think it would, it wouldn't be for another year, so.
Yeah, how are we gonna be able to get them to comply with their financial affairs? Because we're giving them a sizable amount of money, which I don't have a problem with. And the other thing, of course, is the reduction, from my perspective, of the consultant we have, because there's a concern because federal money is involved and we have to, excuse me, we have to fulfill certain criteria, otherwise we have to pay the money back. So this issue, for those who don't know, is that we have to comply with certain regulations and it's just not money to do what you want to. You have to satisfy the federal government because they're giving us the funds.
Yeah, sorry, there was a lot in there that I was gonna address and I my mind started, I was answering one question in my head and then I moved on to the next question, but I believe your concern was basically about how we selected them, like, so they're on the NPA. So we went on the NPA and I consulted the Rhode Island office of, yeah.
Well, I'm not, I'm not concerned, it's just that we have a reduction, like the consultant reduction in in their allotment and is it gonna jeopardize their advice because they're supposed to protect it?
No, no, no. So, so like I was explaining earlier, I don't know if I made myself clear, is that the it, they're gonna bill us incrementally as we go. We're not giving them a lump sum of money upfront. This is gonna be.
This is a consultant.
Exactly. The consultant, we're gonna pay them as we go. So they're gonna give us some advice upfront initially, which I think will probably be the biggest grunt of the work, is just getting us set up with the compliance regulations, getting our, like I said, policies in place. Getting, making sure the town's list of projects are all compliant and getting the RFP established. And then after that, you know, they'll bill us for those hours and then we'll know, okay, this is what we've used to date, and then we can kind of gauge it as we move forward. So it's not something that we're gonna pay for upfront. It's gonna be progress payments. So we'll be paying it incrementally as they continue to do work for us. So at any point, we could pull the plug, you know, if you don't need their services anymore. So again, it's, it's a, it's kind of like a purchase order, like not to exceed type of thing, not, this is what you owe us. It's gonna be a not to exceed amount of twenty-five thousand.
Brian?
Yep.
You used for the benefit of some of us don't understand the acronym used in the people at home, NPA. Could you explain that, please?
Yeah, it's a master pricing agreement. So the master pricing agreement is a state platform that is put together with of vendors who have been approved, pre-approved by the state. And basically, they go, the state will have solicit procurement, like, policy, they'll basically get the lowest price from the vendors. So they'll collaborate with purchasing power. So companies will come to the state basically and say, all right, we know if we get on the NPA, we're gonna get an increased volume of work based on the fact that we're an established state vendor. So they reduce their rates based on the anticipated volume they're gonna get from being on the master pricing agreement. So generally, what we're doing is we're getting the purchasing power of all the municipalities and states, essentially. And we're able to get the lowest rate that way. And according to the town's procurement policy, we don't have to go out to bid if it's, if we select a vendor on the NPA. However, with the federal funds, we kind of went the next level. And I actually spoke with the Rhode Island Division of Purchasing to make sure that we were crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, and we actually did what's called a mini bid. So even though the company we're looking at selecting is on the NPA, we still reached out to all the vendors on the NPA and solicited bids from all of them so that we, we made sure that we were getting the most competitive rates.
Excellent. Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
Brian, a question for you, and I apologize if I asked this before. The town hall consolidation, if we fund the six hundred thousand, what does that get us? What, what, what do we? What, what, what are we able to do for that project in short term? Are we able to move on there?
So, I, I, I think we touched on this, um, at one of, one of our meetings with the ARPA funds, so that would get us to two point two million. Uh, in total funding for the project, the previous one point seven. Yeah, so, I'm sorry, uh, I think it's one point six, um, so the previous one point six, um. Would, was funded to the CIP. Now, as far as would that get us to the goal line, or is that enough funding, i- if that's what you're asking? It's hard to say at this stage, because we haven't. I've, I recently met with the engineers that worked on this, but it, it's dated, so all that material needs to be updated. Especially given the, this market now and the circumstances with increased, uh, you know, inflation, um, increased prices of, um. Cost of construction, so we're, I have to really sit down with them, and I didn't wanna. I didn't want to go down that road and start incurring engineering costs on a project that didn't have legs. So until I got council approval, I wasn't gonna go meet with them and start getting hours billed. So now, I'm gonna sit down with them and dust off that file, get updated figures and report back to the council. With what is a realistic number now, and then we can kind of reassess at that point. Um, now, the last time we looked at it, I believe we were provided a number of one point eight. Um, and there's, but there's a, a lot of pieces to it, uh, there was additional parking lots and, and that. So what I really need to do is get an updated assessment and a, and a breakdown. So we can sit down and look at it and say, okay, if, if the total project has now exceeded our two point two million in total funding. Maybe we can cut some corners and try to maybe find some money elsewhere for, say, the parking lot. Or, or some phase of the project and fund that, um, down the road, um, with another funding source.
Yeah, I'd like to ask.
I just have another, uh, follow-up question on, are we kind of in the same situation with the Activity Center? Or are we more sure of what we're?
So the acti- yeah, the Activity Center is a little bit different, uh, because we had an, an architect go out. And basically give us a breakdown of all the current issues with the structure and what the repair cost would be. So we have a recent number, uh, the update falls around the four hundred to five hundred thousand dollar range. To update the structure, so like new roof, new windows, um, some structural repairs, there's a list. Um, and I can provide that, I will provide that to the council at, um, as we move forward. Now, the, the, the good thing about that project is there's a state match. So if that, if we were, if we're approved for the state match, and it gets approved on the state level first, because the governor's budget. Still has to get, uh, you know, finally, final approval. Um, once that gets approved, we apply for the match. If we get that funding to match, we'll have earmarked five hundred thousand, which would give us a five hundred thousand dollar match. That million dollars happens to be the amount that we would need for new construction.
Okay.
Or, or at least in the ballpark of what we've been told by our architect would, would be, um, for, for the new construction. So that would be, so the, the repairs of the existing structure would be around four hundred, five hundred. If we bring it down to the foundation and build it new, we'd be more in the million dollar range. So it kind of worked out, um, whereas, you know, if we strike out on the state level, we still have the funding to do the repairs. If, if we do get the state funding, even better, and we can get a brand-new structure for the same cost of, of what the repairs are gonna cost us.
Okay, great, thank you, Scott, go ahead.
Uh, the only other question I, is anybody else have a question before I ask a question?
I'll have some, but I'll wait.
Okay, uh, this is my last question, and it's part, and part of your question that Sharon had. Do we know of anything, uh, about, uh, the town of Richmond which is included in this? Because dealing with emergency services, and particularly, uh, we share, the, yeah, Hope Valley Wyoming Fire District includes. Two towns in Hope Valley Ambulance Board does. As, have you heard anything from the town of Richmond as far as the progress on this? Because, uh, according to, uh, our intention, it says, uh. And I'll, I'll read it for the people at home, uh, unfinished business, American Rescue Plan Act Funds, ARPA. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to approve the American Rescue Plan Act Fund Project List for the town of Hopkinton. With the contribution to emergency services contingent upon the town of Richmond approving their requested contribution. So the question is, what happens if Richmond does not approve the requested contribution? That's the question.
Sure, uh, well, again, that, that's completely at the discretion of the council. We'd probably, I think, take that same funding amount that was gonna be split amongst the five. And just, um, you know, it would be allocated to just the Hopkinton Emergency Service Agencies.
Okay.
And as far as, you know, what Richmond's gonna do, I'm not gonna speculate, I, I, I don't dare spec- I don't wanna. Put words in anyone's mouth or speculate on what they're gonna do. I can tell you that the council, um, they brought it to their finance committee, and I believe the finance committee. I, I know there's a meeting tomorrow night, and I think there's gonna be some discussion on ARPA, um, if I'm not mistaken. So, I don't know, there's, I have no indication on what they're gonna do, and I don't wanna, you know, speak for anybody on their side of the fence, so. We'll have to wait and see what they do, um, but either way, that money now is earmarked for Ho- Hopkinton. So if they do contribute to it, then we have the whole amount, and we can divide it equally. But I would imagine if they didn't go with funding, then it wouldn't go to all five agencies, we wouldn't be contributing to the Richmond.
Yeah, but, what is there a legal issue as far as making the motion? Specifically because, uh, for those who don't know, the, um, the fire chief in Hope Valley, as I understand it. Worked with all the emergency management people and came up with a number. Uh, from input from, uh, the Richmond, uh, ambulance and fire districts. Uh, and then plus, uh, the Hopkinton ones, so it's like a jo- it was a joint effort. So the question is, what happens if not everybody's on board? That's the only concern I have.
So it's contingent, I mean, right, so if, if they do not, then we, we go back to the table and we, we change that and make a motion to approve it.
So when we make, when Sharon's got something to say?
Yeah, that, for the record, Hope Valley Fire District did not, so, of the other people.
They didn't do what?
They did not, that was totally, what was submitted was totally presented by, now, Mr. Lee, yes. So, just to let you know that.
Thank you.
And I do think it is the fact that the Hope Valley ambulance. So forty percent of, of the Hope Valley ambulance services goes to Hopk- or Hope Valley. Sixty percent goes to Richmond, and so number one, we should not have paid, been paying half. Number two, our budget passed, just passed, and our budget has, we're paying sixty-two thousand. To each ambulance, and Richmond did not increase, so they're only gonna be paying fifty, right? Or whatever, so the bottom line is, we're already overpaying. And I want it, I want it for the record, and I also think somehow, um. For the future, we need to, we need to do.
Well, so for this discussion, I almost feel like we need.
Well, I, I, well, I, yeah.
I mean.
I was gonna say, at least we should do it evenly.
If, I mean, if somebody is speaking from five different locations without consulting with five different locations. I mean, I don't know if that's.
I've spoken with all of them, and they're all on board, in, in fact, I was going to mention the per, my email to you. Where I proposed doing a twenty percent split, and I've actually spoken with three out of the four, and they are all on board.
That part I don't agree, I don't disagree with, you know, but at the same time, if Richmond did not, is not gonna give their half. Or their percentages.
Right, and that's why we put that as contingent in, in the res- in, in our.
I don't think we should be funding Carolina.
But, which, right. What should always be remembered is the Hope Valley ambulance takes on all of the town of Richmond, and the Hope Valley section of Hopkinton, which. And Hope Valley is like the biggest village in the Terre Haute District, Terre Haute area, so. Uh, and they also do more calls than Ashway does, so it would seem logical. That they would, you know, do more because they have more calls, this is from that perspective.
Well, they've said, Hope Valley ambulance said forty percent of their, they, they do forty percent of their services for Hope Valley. And sixty percent for Richmond, so they, they've said that, so it, you know.
No, go ahead.
So I just think, I just think we oughta, perhaps.
Table it.
Yeah.
There's, there's.
That part.
One line item, everything else?
Yes, yes.
Right, and that's why we wrote it the way we did, that it's contingent upon approval, you know, um, I forget how it's worded exactly. In the agenda.
Right.
It's, that, that line item would be contingent upon it being fully funded by Richmond. If not, then we come back to the drawing board and the council decides how they wanna proceed if, if it's not fully funded by Richmond.
So when we vote tonight, is that gonna be automatically submitted to the federal government, or how does?
No, 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 there's, there's no correspondence back and forth. We have to do quarterly progress reports as far as, um, how much we've spent, how much has been, um, appropriated. We, we don't have to give them.
But we're free to modify.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, there's no, the, the, the biggest thing is, you know, the deadline, obviously, some of these projects really need to. Um, we, you know, they say till December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, but, which seems a long ways away, but it's not. When you start talking about, you know, construction projects in this, uh.
In RFPs and getting things done.
Right, right, and then, you know, you still have a step before that where we gotta work with.
Engineering, you have all kinds of.
Yeah.
Right, and then you have the backlog of equipment, you know, purchases and, and everything else, so.
Well, I mean, since this.
And the cost is going up as we wait, so, I mean, it's.
This is what I'd like to make.
Yeah, I just wanted to just, on the record, because I know we, I sent down an email, but I don't know that it was publicly ever discussed. Um, that, the, the twenty percent split, so I just wanted to clarify that. You know, I proposed that the two towns take the lump sum of money, which I think is.
Right.
The ballpark of two hundred and sixty, and split it amongst the five, uh, organizations evenly at twenty percent.
Right.
And I just, but I just wanted to get the councils.
And that's if Richmond kicks in there, so.
What, I'm sorry?
You said two hundred and sixteen, I said with if Richmond combines.
Exactly, yep.
Shares.
And I just wanted, because I don't know if the council's ever like chimed in and said they're on board with that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's perfectly fine, I, I, I think that's the best way, that whole based on budget thing just didn't work for me. I mean, equipment costs what equipment costs, you know what I mean, the same, you know, tools for one department is gonna cost the same amount, so, you know what I mean? To kind of, you know, I, I, I think it's the best way to go.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion. Everybody's done?
Sure.
Uh, make a motion, we approve or vote on the town manager's. Use of the ARPA funds, COVID money, uh, for lack of better words. With the understanding that we will leave the last item low, uh, with the emergency services in contingency with. Waiting on Richmond. So, hold on, so in other words, I wanted, like, to vote on everything Brian has done, consulting, but that one light item, as it's lined out here. Hold off on that one or table it, that's my motion.
Uh, Councilor Hurst, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Or anybody have anything, Brian, or you fight?
The, the only thing I just wanted to have, at least, um, do my job and, and just make sure that you guys got the correspondence. About Ashway Free Library, Layworthy Free Library, um.
Right, so.
Ocean, uh, community chambers.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure, because, um, I, I wanted to make, I didn't.
Well, with that being said.
To think that I didn't give them their due.
Well, when I, well, then, then we have it, because we haven't discussed it, I, I, I think we need to at least discuss it amongst the council, so. What Brian is talking about is the emails where, you know, so we, we would be allocating this money, right? And that would be without entertaining any of those, uh, requests.
Requests.
So, um, I originally, in, 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 in the way that I had read this agenda, I, I thought. What we had done earlier was we earmarked kind of everything, and we were kind of, um, in agreement that these line item, I mean, these. Uh, lists on this project where we were happy with, but we were gonna have the potential to maybe kind of what you've done with it. You know, kind of move some things around and kind of figure some things out in order to do what we had discussed. Um, I, I thought, you know, at first we were just gonna, you know, maybe we were making a, um, you know, we were trying to approve the emergency services. Part of it, now, because it was, it was something we could do now, and just get them, you know, going with, with their request. So, um, to discuss the, the whole thing, I mean, I, does anyone have anything to say about libraries? And everything else?
Well, I, 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 I have a comment, not specifically toward these new items. But I, I guess, you know, in looking at this list that we tentatively approved already, I still have a concern about the town hall consolidation. Because, just mainly because of the fact that it is, does represent twenty-five percent of the whole ARPA funding.
Right.
And, and I know that it's a necessary item, and we've been trying to fund it for a very long time. Um, but, you know, there's part of me that looks at the list of all of the items that we dropped.
Right.
Funds, and, you know, I can, if we take that six hundred thousand and fund quite a few of these.
Sure.
Um, so, that's really my concern, will, will it affect my vote?
Right, so, so, so for me, I mean, the most part, um, I was. Kind of hoping that this was just kind of earmarked, we were, you know, on, uh, in, in agreement that this is a fantastic direction. Or, or a guide to head towards, but we weren't gonna, I mean, lock ourselves into it. And, and, and I don't think we're locking ourselves into it by voting on it, I mean, we can always amend any decision that, you know, make. But I like the idea of having it earmarked and having it there and kind of checking it off the list as we go, kind of.
Well, here, here's, here's my thing, if I can jump in real quick, I understand what Councilor Marvel is saying, I understand what you're saying, and Sharon too, and Scott. You know, there might be, okay, alright, we got the money for this, I'm, so like, well, guess what, there's a year hold on it. So what are you gonna do, you're gonna earmark money for something like that, you know, there's that, you can always amend it, we can always come back. But my, my motion was, you know, I just wanna move forward this, instead of keep, you know, kind of pursuing it, sure. But I, I guarantee you right now, there's gonna be some stuff in here that I could see that is a year out, maybe two years out before you. You could even, you know, hold in your hand to do something with it. You know, there's such a, with supply chain, everything like that, and I'm sure, if you come back and say, hey, guess what, we can't get audio for the next nine months. You got money for it, but there's, might be something else that comes up. You know, I'd love to, I'd love to see everybody that's come before us get some money, but this is pretty cut and dry, you know.
I, I mean, these all directly affect taxpayers on this list, because it's, it's, they have to pay for it, you know what I mean? So it's not, so that, exactly, so if, I mean, anything gets bumped off this list is eventually. If it was so important to make this list, it's gonna have to be on the list very soon, it's not gonna go away, so that's kind of how I, I view some of it. I mean, pay now, pay later, all of that other stuff. You wanna say something?
Yeah, I, I think that Brian did an excellent job.
I think so too.
And he is, we are funding public works, we are doing the townwide stuff, and I think. I personally saw the, the, the renovation plan or the consolidation plan for the town. It's beautiful, it's really beautiful, um, and, and I think it, it, well, if it doesn't happen now, it won't ever happen.
No, I, I agree with you there.
And so I.
Knowing what I know now.
Everything, everything on this, is the way it is, and I am, I, I am sorry about, you know, the other people, the libraries.
You know, uh.
This is the best expense of the ARPA funds right now.
Take care of, you know, take, much take care of the taxpayers, they use this stuff every day, services, whether it be via town hall. Uh, many of the other things to do.
Well, I get it, I just wanted to make sure we, you know, it, it, it didn't get set or get whatever, but I mean, it's.
But, you know, the, the, the thing is this, you have nonprofits that are vital to a community. But they're not part of town government, and as a person who's really interested in the history of this town, I have seen in my lifetime. I'll be seventy next year, is the Public Works Department is always taking on the chin. And the problem is, we gotta be advocates for the whole town, and. And if we're not, we're not good council people, and that's my own observation, some people disagree with it. Taking care of roads is not a fun thing, it's not like spending money on schools or recreation. Taking care of roads is not a fun thing. It's not like spending money on schools or recreation or libraries, but it. It has to be done. And I know we through the years, we've always talked about. What they've tried to do to keep the vehicles and the public works department going. And public works department, when we have cut back on budget, usually they don't cut the police, they cut the public works department. Because those are the two biggest departments in general government. Uh, the bottom line is this. And I was many years ago, I was trusting the Ashway Library. I go there about every day of my life. Fact is, more people, libraries are more fun than taking care of roads. But roads have to be maintained and people are more likely to support a fundraiser for the libraries than they would. Uh, because nobody cares about roads unless. They have a problem with their car or they get a flat tire or something like that, but you gotta maintain roads. And uh, the school department takes a lot of our money as it is. And uh, we don't have a lot of flexibility because only about twenty five percent. Of our regular taxes goes to general government, the rest goes to Charahoe and. Uh, we have to take a stand for top in it. This is a golden opportunity to take a stand for. Things in our town that have been neglected. And the public works department, just for an example, and I have no relatives that work there. We finally can uh do some justice for them. And uh. Nobody's going to have a fundraiser or for the highway department, but people will have it for the library. I'm in and uh. So I really think that we have a golden opportunity and even uh uh town managers pointed out. Uh, how many years of just planning to replace things? How many years we have saved because of this awkward thing for different things uh for town government? You know, the town of Hopkin Town is very generous. We're very generous to our school system. We're very generous to a lot of other organizations, but it's time for Hopkin to be generous to itself. Sometimes you have to look out for yourself. And I know some people probably wouldn't want a councilman saying that, but a lot of things. Have been neglected because the town of Hopkin has always put itself second. And this is a time to put the town of Hopkin in first and and do some positive things for things that have been neglected through the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
And I think we ought to vote on this list now because. Um, if we already have are going to have supply chain delays, the sooner you get stuff purchased. On order, the sooner you'll get it. So that's.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. It's just as far as, you know, this is a, it is a fluid list. It's not like we're. Appropriating this amount, you know, it's more of an earmark. So, you know, a lot of these numbers. Um, well, I shouldn't say a lot, but they, you're you're looking at estimates, like, is it going to be fifty five thousand dollars?
Oh, yeah.
To the dollar for a new public works, um, you know, three quarter ton pickup with plow? Like, no, it's going to be in that ballpark, you know, so it's going to be, there's going to be line items that are going to be less and higher. Um, unfortunately, given this time in the economy, unfortunately, a lot of times they're higher, not lower, but. Uh, things could change, you know, over the next year, who knows? But um, so we don't know, we don't have a crystal ball. This is kind of just earmarked. And then I don't think these funds, it's not like we're going to say, okay, well, there's, we we have twenty thousand dollars. Project like we can't spend a dollar more, a dollar less. It's going to be one of those things that we're going to have to. But at the same time, we do have to, I I was hoping anyways to get the ball rolling this so we so we can start making. Headway as far as getting some of this equipment, getting some of these things, because if we don't start now and there's delays. A year or two, it's, you know, and now we're under the gun because now we're like getting close to that deadline. So I just think especially with some of these projects, even just getting the engineering and design stuff. And and seeing like these ability studies and getting updated figures, if I get the green light, I can go and get the engineers involved and say, okay. What's the latest value? What's the cost estimate to get this project done? And we can reevaluate it as we go, but. Until I get the green light, I'm not gonna start spending this month. That that's.
Right.
Where I say.
So so maybe what what we should do is move that this be approved as as the priority list. With the full list being alternate opportunities if we are shifting funds. In any way, for any reason, does that make sense? So like, if something for some reason ends up being a lot less or falls off the list. I would assume you would look at one of these other items and say, oh, I can do that instead.
Yeah, absolutely. That'd be the first place I would go, or even like next year when we do the CIP at the starting point. And and the foundation of this list is our annual multi-year goal, which we do every year with Departmentate. So. Yeah, they're they're on on the list, the town's list. So um, you know, I I wouldn't handcuff yourself either. Because something might come up tomorrow, you know, say we needed um like a new security system or.
Hypothetically.
You know, or something comes up out of nowhere and and it's not on that list, you don't want to eliminate it from your options. I would just, so I'm just saying, just be cautious so you don't handcuff yourself and say that we have to go to this second list if. If something falls off of the priority list, you know what I mean? Because something else could come up tomorrow that you guys feel is a priority and then we could.
And and we could, we could make a motion to approve to amend it at any time too, you know, I mean. So I think that kind of gives us some leeway, but it also gives us some commitment to what we're doing.
So I I I will second you.
I think Scott is second.
Oh, okay.
We're fine with the way his motion, I think, was said, right?
I want to just repeat it.
Sure.
So Councilor Gary Gary made a motion to approve the use of the money of the ARPA, the ARPA Rescue Funds. Project list recommended by the town manager, uh but to hold off on the last item, which is the emergency. Services contributions until Richmond decides.
I believe I seconded that.
Right. But uh, so we're gonna have some discussion. Um, do we? Do we think that we should just include the ambulance thing also? Or no? I mean. Because it's contingent on whether Richmond, because if Richmond doesn't.
Just money, it's not buying stuff. So I think we have, we could wait another week, another.
That's fine.
To the next meeting for that last part.
That's fine. Okay.
We, and this, you know, as much as it's not like if this gets approved tonight, tomorrow, we're going to start putting it first. You know, purchase orders for vehicles. I mean, it's gonna, this process unfortunately does not move that quickly. So. I'm still in the process of getting the uh consultant. Hopefully, we can, after tonight's meeting, I can pull the trigger on that. And then we probably still have another two, three week process before we're where we need to be compliance wise and with the RFP. And then we, you know, so we're looking at, you know, you know, August before even start looking to start purchasing. So we we do have time. Um, it's not like, like I said, we're gonna go buy buying things tomorrow.
I like your motion.
So it's been seconded already?
Seconded.
All in favor? Marvel eye.
Davis eye.
First eye, Gary eye. Thank you, Brian.
In Moffat eye, the motion passes.
Lot of work went into this.
Yeah.
Up next, um, we have uh reports of officers, boards and committees. Number one. Town planner slash planning board memorandum in um in response to the growth management ordinance review. So I'm gonna give a little bit of background on this. Um, at a. Not the special uh planning board meeting, but the planning meeting before, uh Mr. Capado had made a um. He had asked a question about a growth ordinance or if there was any type of phasing, phasing to, you know, to building. And um, so he had reached out to um to Lisa and Lisa had found the ordinance and and I had, she had carbon copied me on it. And I went and read the ordinance and I noticed that there was a date in which the planning board had to make a recommendation on this growth ordinance. You know, to the to to the town council. Now, this growth ordinance is um. Uh, effective until December of twenty twenty two. So with the planning board said, if if you've read, you know, the um, the memo from the planning board. Um, and I know they went and they said, you know, talking about getting a consultant and stuff, but. I would like to see the town council extend this. You know, it was extended, I think, in twenty twenty, twenty twelve also. So, I mean, we know that in Hopkin Town, I mean, we don't. You know, with the Charahoe budget and the four percent tax cap, that we have very limited resources and and any type of. Growth ordinance outside of where we currently have, which is not serve as well. Um, if anyone else would like to add to it.
Potentially, Steve, do you have any comments? Well, I I think I could just help add to the background that you uh provided. Uh, the the growth management ordinance is uh. Administered by the building department and it limits the number of building permits that can be given out over time. And so there was a study that was done uh in connection with uh putting the comprehensive plan together back around the year two thousand. Uh, and I've I've seen that study. And uh basically it works toward the goal of of managing the um, the level of school enrollment. And then it's also uh contributing toward the goal in the comprehensive plan of maintaining the rural character. Um, of the town. And so back the last time this was extended, there was, I guess, kind of a deadline for the town to take another look at it. And so the planning board was instructed to make a recommendation by the end of uh this month of June twenty two, twenty twenty two. And then the um, growth ordinance would be set to expire at the end of this year if the council doesn't take any action. Uh, so the the planning board's feedback had to do with hiring a consultant and they had uh, you know, some questions that they directed back to the council. Um, and uh at this point, I think that one, one option that the council has is to just um. Extend the growth management ordinance as is by, say, six months. Uh, to give more time to work on updating it, because in order to update it, you have to come up with the new facts. There's it's driven by a formula. Uh, and I think the main uh input into that formula is the school enrollment numbers. And the planning board had said that a consultant might be helpful in helping them to update it. Um, that is, uh, you know, something that can be decided uh one way or the other. But I think that, you know, in order to. So the the town is not up against this deadline by the end of the year to fix this, you could extend it. Uh, as is for a certain amount of time to give uh the planning board, the council, whoever's going to be involved in working on this project more time to make sure it is. You know, done to everyone's satisfaction and we're not up against this deadline for the end of the year.
What, you're saying the end of the calendar year?
Correct, yes, the end of, the end of twenty twenty two.
And and I would also recommend that this ordinance, you know, you'll be able to look at it too, because we may be able to strengthen it. May be able to, you know, put some more teeth into it.
Right. So if you look back at that study, they go through, uh, you know, a lot of different approaches that have been taken to this. And so. You know, a growth management ordinance for a larger city would be different and they might use a different formula. They might have a different goal than a place like Hopkin Town. So. I I think that most of the concerns that were in existence back in two thousand, which were managing school enrollment and maintaining the rural character of the town. I think those are still the goals that the town has that would be in the comprehensive plan. So I don't think that we would be, you know, throwing it out and starting back from, you know, square one with this. I think we'd probably just want to update the current ordinance with. The up to date school enrollment numbers. I don't think this is something where we would need to, you know, start from scratch with a a brand new. Uh, you know, scheme to to regulate the uh, the building permits being issued. Uh, but that's, you know, we're at a point now where, you know, the planning board has come back and they've directed some questions to the council. And I think there needs to be a discussion about how to move this forward. But in the meantime, um, I think extending it would be. You know, a reasonable option that you could take to make sure that you give yourself the time to um, to get that done.
And 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 just to add what Steve said, you know, um, you know, we had to kind of dig this out. I mean, it it kind of flush itself out. You know, some departments didn't know. Planning, no clue that this exists. So there's some education that needs to be done in some of the departments. And 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 I only mean by saying that is that. You know, they need to review it. We need to know who's who's monitoring it, who's taking care of it. Are we following this ordinance to a T? You know, like, I mean, is there a certain date every year that we need to know the updated enrollment and all this other stuff? So. So if if we're gonna have an ordinance on the books, I think it needs to be, eyes need to be on it and and we need and we need to know how it operates. I mean.
You know, I I, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I I'm certainly in favor of an ordinance, but the political reality and the financial reality is. Rhode Island State Constitution, Article Twelve, Section One says the general assembly should promote education. And education costs drives local budgets. So it's time that the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, and the power players, the teachers' union. All the stakeholders finally attack on the number one issue, financial issue, and that is. The continued reliance on property taxes to fund education. And I suspect. And I'm young enough, even though I'm seventy, my mother lived to be in her early nineties, so maybe I'll see it in my lifetime. That you cannot, and it's not fair to young people, it's not fair to education, not fair to taxpayers to continue relying on property taxes. And I suspect someday a judge will probably order a change in the way education's financed. Because that's really the issue. And that's all I want to say, but it's it's, I think it's probably going to come, probably going to be because of judicial action. Power players will have to do something. Thank you.
So. Um, basically. You could extend it without updating the facts. It's just that the uh that the planning board. Didn't want to make a recommendation without the fact, the the facts, the data, the data, right?
But me, the, you know, myself in a whole, knowing that as a whole, knowing what Hop- the Hopkins financial situation. And how depending on what the Charahoe budget is and what percentage that's going to throw at us and having a CIP average of one hundred and seventy five to two hundred thousand dollars a year. I mean, for any town would be easily impacted by any type of increase in enrollment in Charahoe. I mean, that it it's just, it it's it's mind boggling. And I don't want to say that the planning board is overthinking. I'm not, but I mean, I've lived here long enough to know that any type of growth ordinance would be good business in Hopkin Town. And I don't need a, an expert to tell me that. You you know what I mean? It's, I mean, you just look at the budget, look at the numbers and everything else. You you know what I'm saying?
So you're, so you're for.
I'm for extending it, but also looking at it to make sure that we aren't selling ourselves short also. Mister President.
How can you do that if you're not going to necessarily do it?
Well, I I what I would sug- to suggest, uh, I mean, one, one approach you could take would be to put this. On an upcoming agenda to have a vote on whether to extend the current ordinance and keep that in place. And then probably at that meeting, you would want the town employees and officials who are responsible for this to to be present and have that discussion. About what is the next step to move forward? Is it hiring a consultant? Is it assigning someone that is already on the town staff to to work on this? Is it, you know, updating the current formula? Is it? You know, revisiting the whole thing from from, you know, from zero to like. Do we want to rethink how we do this? Or do we just want to update the current formula? But that's a discussion that. You know, I think there are quite, you know, the the planning department would be involved in that, the building, the building official and. Um, so I think that that's uh probably, you could probably put that all on on an agenda together, is, you know, vote to extend the current one and also, you know. Have a meeting of the minds kind of 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 how to move it forward as far as getting it updated.
Brian, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, and maybe I'm I'm mistaken. I just wanted to make sure. I'm sure you guys are involved in this. I I was under the impression it expired at the end of the month.
No. We needed a recommendation based on the ordinance from the planning board before June thirtieth.
Okay.
Um, the planning board solicitor wasn't going to be around for the last week of June, so they called an emergency meeting, had an emergency meeting. Were where they were presented on on short notice with this ordinance and everything. Um, Al Diorio was the only one who remembered it being there, but had, he he said it had slipped his mind that it even was still valid or anything. So so just to kind of follow through, just to make sure, I wanted to make me sure we did our due diligence, planning board, you know, saw it, heard it, gave us a recommendation. Um, we've gotten a confirmation from the planning solicitor that their recommendation for consultant would satisfy that recommendation. So um, I personally want to take that as their recommendation, as that's it. And then was to have a consultant, but I don't think we need to have a consultant. I think, you know, according with Steve and and what you and I talked about maybe earlier this morning, Brian, was, you know, the numbers, moving the numbers and just putting the new numbers. I mean, it's, uh, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. I mean, anybody that's lived in Hopkin Town long enough knows that, you know, the ebbs and flows of students in Charahoe. I mean, this is why we're looking at this stuff, you know what I mean? Like, we're, I mean, it looks nickel and dime. Be be sure there's some price, price, price tag tags, but. There's plenty of things on here that we have to buy. I mean, buy now, buy later. I mean, we have to buy it.
And Mister President, if I could, like, growth, growth, I mean, the main thing that's driving this is the school enrollment numbers, but growth management is also about.
Part of the confidence.
Managing the town's resources, like public works, like, you know, the the administrative capability of of. of, of planning and zoning to process applications that can't be coming in so quickly that they get overwhelmed. I mean, it goes to a lot of things. It just happens that when they put this, when they did the study before and put this ordinance together, that school enrollment was the, you know, the numbers that they used to drive that formula, but it, but it affects a lot of things in town and not just, not just, not just the school.
Absolutely. So, so I, so with this discussion, I would like to put it on, on a, a future agenda to vote to extend it with the invitation of the departments that are, are, you know, responsible for monitoring it and just give them some time to absorb it too, you know what I mean? So they can, you know, get their facts straight and understand, you know, you know, whether or not we've had to apply this ordinance or not. I mean, that'd be nice to know too, whether or not it's ever had to have been, no, 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 we're not giving out any more building permits until we get satisfied and we, and, and we know the numbers. Because it is, I mean, it, it does seem like a complex formula, but I don't think it's going to be all that bad for us, so.
And when, when it was extended, it was only extended once in 2011 and, and once in 2012? So for, in 2012, was it extended for 20, for 10 years?
It may, it was, yeah.
It was?
Yes. Because the numbers, I mean, we know, I mean, the, there's such a small percentage between the town and the budgets and the taxes and everything that, I mean...
Okay. So do you think, put it on the, put it on the...
Yes, we'll put on a future agenda.
And we'll decide if we want to extend it for however many years and also...
For however long.
And also if we want to update it.
Or look at it a little harder and make sure we're not short of changing ourselves on, on some of it.
Mr. President, if I could make, I think it would be very helpful for the council because, oh, I've probably seen that study and some other things that not all of the council members have seen. So it would be very helpful for everyone to have that study that was done and maybe the meeting minutes for when this was considered in the past, to have those to review.
All right, yeah, perfect.
All right, I'm going to put it on an agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion on it? Are we all satisfied with putting on an agenda?
Yeah.
Excellent, all right. So we will put it, I mean, a month from now? I mean, you've got to give them time to...
My question, I think, would be as far as process. I do recall that when they continued it, they established it as an ordinance. That would be my question, does it have to be all the same process? Or is the next agenda that we put it on is just strictly to determine, yes, we want to continue that? Or do we have that...
I think it would be to, I think it would be to amend the ordinance, but the only thing being amended would be that date that it expires.
So is that a zoning ordinance?
Well, no, it's not part of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so that's a simpler process.
Right, well, that's, yeah, it's not located in the zoning ordinances. It is actually enforced by the, the building inspector, so it's not really related directly to zoning.
So it's advertising stuff like that?
Right.
If it's advertising, it's like one time.
Right, well, there's a lot more burden on the clerk to advertise and comply for a zoning amendment as opposed to...
It's a lot complicated.
I think this is just an ordinary amendment, right?
All right, so let's set that up and you'll just give us a date, Lisa, and we'll figure...
You want it on for the next...
Well, I want to give the building and zoning some time to, you know, because I know Anthony hasn't been with us all too, too long, right?
So you want to talk at the 18th of July?
Yeah, that sounds...
Okay.
Excellent.
All right, so up next is public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, just go to the podium, say your name for the record. Or if you're at home, just raise your hand and you'll be called upon. Go ahead.
My name is Joe Capalvo, 45 Woody Hill Road. And I came tonight because that ordinance that you just talked about is a particular concern to me. And thank you for extending that and doing what you're doing. I also think that when your time is right and you give yourself some time, that, that ordinance could be revised to, like you said, not, not hurt the town of Hopkinton, help the town of Hopkinton. My interest on this happened when I came to a planning board meeting dealing with the brushy book proposal of 140 houses up off Die Hill Road. I don't abut it, but friends of mine do, and I live fairly close. And I asked the developer, I said, well, in his plan, he was going to phase in 20 houses over seven phases, 140 houses total. And I said to him, okay, what's a phase? Is it six months? Is it a year? Is it two years? Very evasive about that. I then asked him, I said, well, what is the total cost of this proposal? And he said he didn't know. I didn't believe either answer. I think he will sell those as quickly as time, money, and the market allow. So mentally, I'm doing a little mathematics, 140 houses, an average of two kids per house is 280 kids. And who knows how fast those, those projects would be done? Or if I'm the developer and I sell 10 lots to Scott as a developer and he's working and I sell 10 lots to somebody else and they're working, we could have a lot of houses being developed very quickly. So that's why I think this ordinance is very, very important to the town, not only in the impact of it on the Charahoe school system. I taught there for 32 years, by the way, on double sessions many of those days, and it's, it's, it's not pleasant. When I went there, we were building part of the building and we were forced to have double classes in the same period, math and Latin in the same period, same time. That's not pleasant either, either. So space-wise, it's a big concern, and I don't have to impress that on you, you know that. Money-wise, it's a big concern. I don't know many of you in here, Brian and Scott, and we've lived here our whole lives. And the town is important to us and the rural characteristics are very important as well. So I think this ordinance, excuse me, this ordinance is very, very important and it will dictate the character of the town to come. And you, by extending this, is very good. And also, I think it does need some revision. I've read it two or three times and, and when the time comes, I don't know what the format is, but will you accept suggestions, recommendations for consideration from the public?
Yeah, absolutely. We would always, you know, accept suggestions from...
And I don't...
Suggestions, I mean, obviously.
Right, right, obviously.
There would be a public hearing if there's an ordinance amendment being proposed.
Yeah, that, that would be nice, because I, you know, I have some, I'm sure there's people other than besides me that have recommendations as well. And I also agree with you, Mr. Moffett, that I don't think you need a consultant to do this, it's fairly straightforward. If you use the same format of seats allowed for Hopkinton students at Charahoe, I also think you could revise that further, but that's down the road when we do the, do the recommendations. So I'll just conclude that I think it's a very, very important ordinance and it will set the tone for the town. We want a rural town. I'm not saying I'm against growth, but I want slow, orderly growth. I don't want another Warwick put in, you know, in, in the depths of Hopkinton. So thank you very much and...
And thank you for being, for your time, thanks for coming.
Just, just as a note, Mr. Capalvo is, he was graduated a year ahead of me, was valedictorian of his class, but he's also a former member of the Hopkinton Town Council.
Good evening, Joe Moreau.
Old Depot Road.
I want to thank Brian, our town council members, and our town employees for the great job that they did with this and have been doing with the Opera Funds. I've been involved, I've said it before, since 2018 with the budgeting process, attended these meetings when Bill McGary was the town manager, Brian was the finance director. There were years where we couldn't put any money in that CIP, just didn't have the funds without raising taxes. You know, I, I disagree with a couple of points that Councilor Marvle made. When I look at residents that can't get up to the finance department, they can't get up to the planning department if they're in a walker or a wheelchair, they can't get into this building if they're in a wheelchair. Again, our employees will help them out, but that, that's not the point. I hate to see us, after all the hard work you've done, start chipping away to give funds to other needy organizations when they can do fundraising. Councilor Davis was kind enough to drop off the plans. I looked at it for what is proposed for this. I believe there were 20 spots, going to add an additional 20 parking spots. I guess my only question is, in the end, is there a better option out there? I know we, we've discussed that. From a very reliable source, I was told that there's a lot of water issues here, and I'm sure with the engineering studies that, that they found that out. I looked the other day, inflation's at 8.2%. Councilor Moffett mentioned it. If we don't do this town hall expansion now, it's not going to get done. It will not get done. We have a golden opportunity to satisfy and help out our entire town, not one particular organization, but residents from our town will greatly benefit from the changes that we can make, whether it's this building or another building. That's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Brian, is there anyone on, on the computer that has their hand raised?
The only, so we...
That's it? All right. So if no one else has anything to say, we are going to go into executive session. So, and then after that's going to be the adjournment. So can I, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Go move.
No, you got to state the section, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll make a motion if we recess an executive session on Rhode Island General Law, Section 42 slash 46 slash 5A2. And do I have to state the reason or just the citation? Okay. Sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work, sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation, discussion will be about contracts for solid waste disposal of Rhode Island General Law is 42 slash 46 slash 5A7, matter related to the question of the investment of public funds, a premature disclosure would adversely affect the public interest, Rhode Island General Law is Section 42 slash 46 slash 5A5, potential property acquisition.
I second.
All in favor?
First, I.
Marvle, I. Davis, I.
Jerry, I.
And Moffett, I, motion passed as we are heading into session.
All right, do I have a motion to reconvene in open session?
Mr. President, I move that this talk can end town call.
All right. Do I have a motion to reconvene in open session?
Mr. President, I move that this Hopkin and Town Council reconvene in open session.
I second. All in favor?
Chris, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
Inmoth and I, motion passes. Council president's statement that no votes were taken in, taken during executive session. Do I have a motion to conceal, a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
Mr. President, I make a motion that the minutes of the executive session be sealed.
I second.
All in favor?
Chris, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
Inmoth and I, motion passes. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. President, I make a motion that the Hopkin and Town Council adjourn.